Evening, it's now six o'clock. Welcome to a Swanee County Commissioner Regular Schedule Board Meeting for seven, 2017. Tonight I ask Commissioner Clyde Fleming to open us with invocation and pledge. Please stand.
Let us pray. This afternoon, our Father, we come at all my hearts and bow heads and we come calling on your name just one more time. Father, thank you for the blessings, all the many blessings you bestowed upon us, and thank you for being God, and thank you for being there for us. We pray tonight that your blessings look over our country. Oh God, bless those that are in charge tonight. Bless our county as a whole. Look on the victims that were assassinated, oh God, out in Texas. Pray God that you bless their families, give them strength. Father, make a way out of nowhere, but we need you tonight, and we love you, we thank you. Just we act in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Let you leave.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business, approval of minutes, October two, October seventeenth, 2017, regular schedule board meeting. Do they have any changes, corrections?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Sessions. I got a session by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to consent agenda. Item number six has been pulled for discussion. Item ten has been pulled altogether. Any other items wishing to be pulled for discussion? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve two through five, seven through nine, and eleven through twenty-one.
Motion approved.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Next up, we're going to move on to a presentation from D O.
Can we go back to six?
Oh, sorry. I'm trying to get us there quick.
All right.
One track mind. Item number six was pulled for discussion. County Attorney Jimmy Pravat.
Thank you. Gentlemen, this is the typical records disposition document that Barry presents and the other departments present, you know, for our standard record retention and then destruction. There are several items on here, though, that I would like the board to consider pulling for destruction at this particular point. On the first page, it's item number three thirty-four, Committee Board Appointment Records. On the second page, there are items number one oh nine and item number three forty-eight, which are the grant files, which are grantor-agency files and grantor-recipient files. Like for those to be pulled for non-destruction at this particular point. If you turn to the third page, item number four thirteen and item three oh five have to do with the term development tax applications and tax collection records. I'd like for those to be pulled. And finally, down, two-thirds of the way down, item number seventy-two, which are wills for people deposit with the clerk's office to hold them for safekeeping. They're all, they're not really recorded, but they're held there for safekeeping, and in my judgment, a twenty-year period of time is not long enough to hold those things. I can just, you know, imagine somebody fifty years old goes in there and deposits a will, and they don't die until they're eighty, and all of a sudden, we've just gotten rid of their will in the meantime. So I would really think we need to change our policy there, at twenty years anyway, and to keep those things at least fifty years. You know, but anyway, I want to pull those for the moment. Everything else, I don't have any other items to be pulled.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Pravat?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The clarification on the second page, what numbers were those?
The grant files, they're about ten lines down.
Yeah.
Item one oh nine.
One three forty-eight.
And three forty-eight. Some of the, we have a five-year retention policy, and some of the grants actually extend for seven years for us to keep those records, so I don't want to throw them away before the time that we're supposed to keep them.
There you go. All right. Any further questions? I have a motion to approve with the changes, the request from the attorney.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson. Second by Commissioner Sessions. You have those changes noted? With the changes, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. And item ten was pulled.
Item ten was pulled altogether because we actually approved that on July seventeenth earlier this year. I don't know why they don't have a copy of it, but we approved it and executed it on the seventeenth.
We just need to send them a copy of the executed.
Yes, sir.
Document. Thank you. All right, now, we'll move on to a presentation from the DOT, Mr. Barney Bennett.
Good evening, I'm Barney Bennett with the Florida Department of Transportation, and I do have one handout. This is a copy of a work program that we've submitted to the legislature this year. This is a list of projects for Swanee County. As you go through this list of projects, it's similar to project lists I brought you in the past, where the top tier of projects is the interstate. We've got some lighting projects. You'll notice the fourth one down is a rest area, both the Swanee County Rest Area and the Columbia County Rest Area, which are very close to each other. Both of those will be completely demolished and rebuilt in their entirety, so there's a full replacement of those rest areas, followed by some resurfacing and landscaping. Into the second tier of projects are some of our state highway projects, and then the bottom tier of projects are the scrap and scop or local programs projects. You'll notice the first four projects are drainage improvements. Those are projects with the Swanee River Water Management District that will look at the drainage wells here in Live Oak. They have a process of, or I should say, a generic design for redesigning those drainage wells to provide water treatment prior to the water going down to the well. Below that, then, is a list of scrap and scop projects that we're currently working on, or I should say, are currently programmed for Swanee County. In light of these projects, our work program public hearing is posted on our website. The website is D two W P P H dot com. D two is in the number two. That's short for District Two Work Program Public Hearing. So D two W P P H dot com. You can go onto that website, you can make any comments you like on the work program. Please don't send your comments to me, they won't go anywhere. It's best to put them directly onto the website. Those comments are due by November twentieth. Yes, comments are due by November twentieth to our work program website. Additionally, I wanted to go over some of the scrap and scop projects, or I should say, project solicitation. Right now, we've sent out the solicitation for new projects. What we've changed is, in prior years, we asked for two projects under scrap, two projects under scop, two projects under CP, two projects under TRIP, and each of those programs have different requirements and different type of work you can do. It's very confusing to me, who works in on a daily basis, and certainly confusing to anybody who only works in it once a year. So what we have changed is, we're asking you just to send us three projects, maximum of three. We will then figure out what the funding source is. We've updated the application form itself to cover those four different programs, and additionally, we have a website that is really, really close to being ready to go, where you'll be able to do a web-based application if you don't want to do the paper or the PDF form of that application. Again, it is maximum of three projects, as opposed to upwards of eight projects that could be submitted in the past, and the reason we did that is because the number of projects submitted far exceeded the amount of funding we had, and so it took a lot of the county staff time to generate the applications. It took a phenomenal amount of our time to review them, when we didn't have anywhere close to that amount of money to fund the projects. So again, those projects are due to me, the applications are due either to the website or the PDF to me by December twenty-ninth. Additionally, the transportation alternative program, which is your bike paths and sidewalks, that solicitation is out, and those are due back to me by December first. And in a nutshell, that's all I have.
Have any questions?
I have a question. Barney? The third item down is, this, I'm assuming, is the overhead tower lighting and interchange is on I ten.
Correct, that'd be the high mast lighting.
That third one, I ten and County Road one thirty-seven interchange, it's pretty desolate there, there's nothing there. I'm sure that wildlife will appreciate their mast lighting. But more importantly, we are actually trying to develop the interchange of I seventy-five and one thirty-six, just a little bit north into the east. I don't know if these had engineering in a prior year, I can't remember, you know, and I don't have the copies with me, but what are you, would you suppose our chances are if we wanted to shift that project over to, or ask to have it shift over to the other interchange at I seventy-five and one thirty-six instead of at I ten and one thirty-seven, where there's literally nothing?
In the short term, probably not much. This is a statewide program, and it's run out of Tallahassee, and it's based on per corridor basis. However, let me go back to the office, let me get with some folks and see what, if it's not a better use of our funds, you say I seventy-five and one thirty-six is.
Yes, sir, I seventy-five and one thirty-six, there are some businesses up there, there's some McDonald's and some gas stations, and we're fixing to build a sewer treatment facility up there and hoping to stimulate some economic developments and businesses, so it'd be nice to have lighting there.
Okay, and that may be something that's in the pipeline, I'll just have to check and see what that corridor looks like. And I'll get back to you on that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Bennett?
Just thank you.
I do have one question about the bridge, one eighty street bridge.
Okay.
Is that slated for next year?
The design, you talk about the second project from the bottom.
That's just the engineering part of it?
That's just the design portion of it.
Mm-hmm.
Followed by right away, the actual construction is scheduled for 2023, and that's using our federal bridge funds.
Any further questions? All I have for you, Mr. Bennett, is, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Appreciate everything y'all do for us and all the work that y'all dedicate to Swanee County.
You bet, and I appreciate you putting me towards the top of the agenda, and.
Figured you had other things to do than listen to us talk all night.
Always a pleasure to come to Swanee County.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Barney. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
We got two minutes until a time specific, so I'm going to jump down here to general business, item twenty-six, discuss with possible board action to purchase a radar equipment for Florida Highway Patrol. Turn our attention to County Administrator Randy Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have a history of providing some funding for this purpose, and we included some prior minutes if the board would entertain the request that was made by the officer, you've got the information in your packet.
Got any questions from the board? I actually spoke with the officer, and the equipment he's operating with now has seen better days. He asked about getting an item placed on the agenda for consideration.
Seems like he's got some outdated stuff.
Yeah, it's pretty outdated, pretty raggedy what he's working with.
Yeah. Actually, Mr. Chairman, they had, about a year ago, they had returned a lot of obsolete radar equipment, probably ten or twelve pieces, and we had put them on the surplus list for disposal. So we disposed of a whole lot more than they're asking for now.
Oh, yeah, they just asked company for this one vehicle, correct?
I want to ask you a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What is, okay, on citations, I think, you have like twelve, eleven or twelve dollars per citation that the county received, we still get that amount, or has it increased? Do you know?
I can't answer the question. I saw that in the minutes, that's, that was a comment, I think, by Commissioner in 2009, but I really can't answer that. I don't know.
Baker, do you know?
This is a list of some of the different places. This is just one of the tickets. They were like a hundred and sixteen dollar ticket, which is one of the most tickets. This is how the ticket is broken apart. As a lot of those are different trust funds, but in the state, our office receives twenty-six dollars, the sheriff's law enforcement education fund receives a little bit, spread out there, just different things. It's a gory's lock spur. It's a brain and spinal injury. If you just go down, down.
That's a lot of them, though.
That's the only copy. I want to pass it down.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any further questions?
Is that, Mr. Chairman, is this something that we fund that basically comes in out of the surplus that we sell, so it's, does it go in a general fund and therefore it just comes out of general fund? Or is there a budget item that we get every year for this, because I've never seen this before?
No, your, the revenues for this wouldn't be associated within a surplus.
So where would we get the revenue on?
You would take it out of the board.
It'd come out of board contingency.
Okay.
And you'll have any number of requests through the year on any number of different issues, and the board approves some, very likely.
Ideally, it would be, if they knew they had this request coming, that they'd submit it during the budget workshops, but historically, for these requests from DOT, they haven't made it to the budget workshops. I think that was an issue at the last one.
The state's fiscal year runs different than ours does, because they don't think in our terms when it comes to the fiscal year. They start, I think, in, maybe July, June or July.
Any further questions? So I have a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second. Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, it's now six eighteen, so we'll move back up to time specific. At six fifteen, or soon thereafter, as the matter can behold, hold a public hearing to consider a resolution providing, approving special permit for temporary use request by TNT Fireworks to be granted a special permit for temporary use under section fourteen ten Swanee County Land Development Regulations. Turn our attention to, well, County Attorney Jimmy Pravat for swearing in.
All righty, we're opening the public hearing. If anybody anticipates that you may give testimony at this public hearing and the public hearing that will be following after this, would you all stand to be sworn? All righty, now, if I miss you, if y'all change your mind and you start to come up here, just remind me, and I'll swear you in as you come up to the podium. Mr. Meeks, staff, you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give before the board this evening will be the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the application is kind of self-explanatory. We had a request for the temporary use permit for fireworks tent sale. It is by TNT Fireworks to be located on the Walmart property located off of one twenty-nine North near the I ten interchange. The date of the event would be December the twenty-sixth through December the thirty-first of 2017. This is one of the same companies that had made the previous request back late June, early July for their tent sale that they had for the Fourth of July event. This tent sale would be for the New Year's, that they would propose to sell, it would be a five-day event. Property is currently zoned commercial intensive. The land use regulations allow for the board to issue temporary use permits in districts where similar-type activities are being conducted, so this would comply with that requirement. Also, the applicants are required to obtain their permit and inspection from the fire marshal's office prior to them commencing the start of their event as well. I've included a proposed resolution for approval for your request. If you entertain that approval, if you have any questions to me, I'll answer them. At this time, I'll enter the file into the record.
Thank you. I'll take the file along with the application, and the proposed resolution is composite exhibit one.
I have one question. Is there a deadline for any other company to come to you to give this approval?
There's not necessarily a deadline, other than what we have in order to advertise for our public hearings. I don't think that there would, in our time slot now, we'd be hard-pressed to be able to get another one in before the first of the year.
That's what I was thinking, because there was another one in the past, so this may be the only one.
I don't know whether they do a New Year's event. I do know that there's always been two that locate there Fourth of July. This one is the only one we've been contacted for, for the New Year's event.
All right. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments. Thing done, this time we'll close public comments. The board have any questions? What's the wishes of the board?
You approve.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
By Commissioner Richardson.
Who was the second?
Got a second by Commissioner Sessions. Any discussion? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes five zero. At this time, we'll close public hearing and move into our next public hearing. At six fifteen, or soon thereafter, as the matter can behold, hold a public hearing to consider adoption of a resolution approving special permit number SP seventeen eleven oh one by L and T Villages Farms LLC to be granted a special permit under section fourteen six of Swanee County Land Development Regulations for intensive agricultural to construct two poultry houses on property zone Ag one. Everyone's been sworn in that wish to speak, please, so turn our attention back to Ron Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the application you have for your request tonight is for the construction of two poultry houses on property zone Agricultural One. The subject property is a thirty-eight point seven zero acre parcel located in section twenty-five, down ship three south, range twelve east, off of County Road three forty-nine. The farm is currently an active poultry farm. The site plan shows that there's an existing four houses. The site plan also shows that there was some damage done to house that is listed number three. Part of that house was destroyed during Hurricane Irma, and they are currently in the process of demoing that poultry house. So the applicant requests that they would be able to construct, they tear that house down, construct a new house to take its place at the end of the other ones, and then also construct an additional one. We're saying construction of two houses, but there would technically only be an additional one, because one would be going away. The construction of those new poultry houses would meet the required three hundred foot setbacks from the property lines. The existing poultry houses do not currently meet that setback, but the applicant would be able to meet those with the new construction of the two houses at the end of the other ones. For the land use regulations for findings portion of section fourteen point six, as I previously stated, the ingress and egress would be off of County Road three forty-nine. Off-street parking is not required for this request, but would be provided for on-site. There are existing refuse areas provided in various locations for the farm. The property is an active poultry farm with existing houses. Could require additional electrical permits to be obtained through the building department after these houses are constructed. There's no special buffering requirements in this zoning district. Property has an existing sign with the name of the farm at the entrance. The required setbacks are being met. The comprehensive plan does allow for intensive agricultural by special use permit. The existing land use pattern is agricultural, with this existing farm and other agricultural uses existing in the area. We see no impact upon schools, utilities, and streets, no impact upon the neighborhood, the established land use is agricultural, no impact upon living conditions, traffic, or light in the adjacent areas, no known impact upon property values in the area, and would not have an impact upon development of the property. As with other agricultural uses, we've seen an increase in production, which requires the construction of additional houses. The applicant also owns an additional one point three zero acres that are joined this, where their homestead is located at on the property. If you don't have any questions to me at this time, I'll enter the file into the record. The applicants are also present, if you have any questions specific to their use.
Okay, at this time, I'll take the file along with the proposed resolution in as composite exhibit one.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, sir, just help me understand something, because on the picture, aerial photo, I've got four houses, one in the center that's being, that's going to be just demolished and rebuilt, but then on the drawing they provided, they provided number four and number five on the other side.
I think there's just a discrepancy in the numbering of the houses.
Okay, so they're only adding one additional new house on the side.
There will be one that'll be destroyed, it will not be replaced where it sits now, it'll be replaced at the end.
Thank you.
There'll be two new constructed houses. Also, the site plan, county indicates that these houses are located abutting each other. There is about a sixty, sixty-five foot separation between those.
That does help me understand exactly what you're saying.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none? At this time, we'll open the floor to public comments. Anyone wishing to speak, wait to the podium. Seeing none, at this time, we'll close public comment. Any discussion from the board?
My, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One of the things you have in approving special permits is the ability to put a condition on there. I know that they don't propose to rebuild the one that's there, but to make sure that because they, they don't really have a site development plan to be able to do it, can we put in there as a special, you know, as a special condition that it will not be rebuilt on that site?
The one that's destroyed, yes.
Yeah, the one that's destroyed. So that would be what I would ask to put on as a special condition for the permit.
Is it currently being demolished now?
It's partly, it's partly demoed. When we went out there to do a site visit, part of the house was torn down, I don't know. How far are you with your demolition now? We will finish now.
Good. Any other questions or discussion from the board? What's the wishes of the board?
I make motion approved.
With the conditions.
With the conditions.
Thank you.
Got a motion to approve with attorney's recommendation by Commissioner Sessions. Still have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes five, at this time, we'll close public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
At this time, move on to item twenty-four, discuss with possible, Commissioner Adams, discuss with possible board action, renovation funding for Ranchance Community Center. Commissioner Ronnie Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to this. We talked about this in the, during the budget workshops, and I thought it'd be best put in the, one of the commission meetings about designating some funding out of the, of our, I guess, contingency fund, about five thousand dollars for the Ranchance Community Center to get things like your flooring done, new tables, chairs in that community center. And I'd just like to ask the board to do that, if we can do that, get it out of the
And you said from contingency?
I would have, I believe, forgive me if I get the names wrong, this, these funds, so I believe it would be.
Any questions from the board or any discussion? Any questions from the board or any discussion? Yes, sir. If you would, state your name, address for the record.
You're talking to me?
If you want to speak, yes, sir.
John Koch, 1-805-289-Roe. My wife, daughter, and I clean that community center twice a year during elections, and what is really needed in there, the floor is fine. I know it's concrete, and it doesn't look like, but it cleans well. And what is needed in there is the ductwork to the air conditioning and the heating system. The squirrels have got in there and done a number to it. The other thing is, is that the bathrooms need to be redone and worked. We've had to seal off for two elections, three elections, four elections now, one of the two bathrooms. Now, one is sufficient for the use of elections, but if you're holding a big event or would like to rent it out, that area would need to be redone and remodeled. The furniture, I agree with, but those are the things that I would concentrate on in the Ranchance, Commissioner and Commission. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Just real quickly, do they do fundraisers out there in the community to support this community center?
I don't believe so.
Because this board, or in previous boards during the budget workshops for all of the other agencies, outside agencies, that question has come up numerous times. Do y'all hold fundraisers? Because the county cannot afford to support 100% the, these other activities.
I understand that, but this is wholly owned, this is the only, far as I know, wholly owned community center by the board and by the county. And it's, it's one of those things that we have a responsibility to as a board, to maintain these facilities, because it's part of our, it's part of our assets. And it's also in the, Mr. Koch, I apologize, I didn't realize the condition of everything out there, but the, you know, we've got some things that need to be fixed out there, need to be addressed, and I'd be glad to take that, have that money set aside just for, make sure that those, those things are addressed. Now, will we have some help putting down the, you know, doing some of the work? I don't, I don't know. I think that they, I've talked to facilities, I've talked to Parks and Recreation, they feel like that we have the staff to do it and save some money. And I don't know what's gonna, what the cost is gonna be, but we felt like $5,000 was a, was a fair beginning balance, just to get the thing back up in working condition, so it can be rented out. And that could be an adequate fundraiser for it in itself, just simply renting it for various community activities.
Ms. Sessions?
Currently, do you rent it out? Is it rented out for anything, any events besides?
It's rentable, but it's not actively rented, that I know of now.
In Lafayette County, all the community centers in Lafayette County are rented. They're on a list, and people pay for family reunions, things like that. I know I've rented the one in Daytown many times for family reunions, so once you think you get it, you know, up to snuff, I would look into doing something like that, but somebody's gonna have to take responsibility to manage that.
And Parks Recreation does take care of that, manage that responsibility on rentals, and whenever we talked about using them for the town hall meetings, that's who I called, calling was Mr. Scott, and he went out there and, he told me basically what the process was, but not something, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we get a lot of calls for.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Michelle.
Got a question, Mr. Richardson. Should we maybe not just say $5,000, and let's do a little homework and have someone go out there and look at some of the things that he mentioned, or Scope mentioned, and get a more detailed list of what we're looking at and maybe prioritize what needs to happen there?
I think with the additional information on there, yeah.
He named a lot of things there to...
I know we can't, I know that we can't put everything in these upfront, but I would like to at least get started making it somewhat presentable.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, thank you very much. I would suggest that too, because you have a good roof, you've got a good building, and it is quite adequate for a lot of uses. It is not fancy, but it could use some sprucing up and instead of a floor and some other things, yes, that would be a good idea, and I would strongly, and if you would like some help in a citizen volunteer, even though that's not my community, I'm down the road, call upon me and I'll assist. Can I put foot in mouth now?
You're good. Thank you. Any further discussion?
I just simply would, I'd be glad to pull that request for the time being and go back, but I would like to see facilities go out, take a look at the, at the AC system and the bathrooms, make sure that what he's saying is true. I know that their one bathroom is not in really good shape, so, and then get back with this in a different time, address it down.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Moving on to staff reports. This time, we'll hear from Economic Development Director, Dr. Alvin Jackson.
Once again, it is another great afternoon in beautiful Swanee County. We are fully moved into our new offices at 100 Court Street Southeast, and really want to thank Public Works, Calvin and his staff for being very prodigious in moving us on last week, and Mark, for his staff assisting us with some carpentry that was needed at the last minute. And of course, we can't live without technology, and really want to thank David and Vicky for really helping us with all our technology, because without it, we really could not operate. So just really want to thank the clerk and Vicky and David for their assistance. I think we had used up their time for about three days, so we are all in now. Just want to give a brief update, and we do have some handouts here on the economic development activities. You know, when we talk about economic development, you know, I always talk about really over a period of time, the intent of economic development is really to raise the quality of life for the residents here in economic development. And the bottom line is really creating jobs, better incomes, and tax role expansion. And so what I would just kind of want to show here is over the last few years, kind of what that kind of looks like from a quantification standpoint. And just in square feet, you know, we've created about 1.6 million square footage, additional square footage, that's expansion or new square footage, about 794 improved acres, and capital investment, about $165 million in new capital investment, a little over 760 new jobs. And this board, under your leadership, created an incentive program, and basically that's paid out over seven years, and you have committed a little over $5 million, probably a little less, because we've even had one company that actually just said, you know, you know, we'll just redraw our incentive commitment of about $427,000. And so, once again, $5 million, spread that over seven years, and the bulk of those incentives really were given the first year that we approved the incentives. The real benefit is the taxes increases. In year 16, and most of the projects came in in 14 and 15, it takes a little while for those, the tax role or the cash to flow in. In 16, it was about 1.8 million, about 1.9 million, and this year, it's estimated to be close to the same, about 1.9 million. And that will continue to increase over the years, just with those businesses. And it's been a combination of manufacturing, retail, restaurants, et cetera. It has been, you know, pretty even, county, city, about 21 projects, and it's been pretty even in the number. And so the average salary has been about $33,762. And so there's been, been an increase in the average salary. And so when we talk about economic development, that's what we're talking about, creating jobs, increasing the average salary, and adding to the tax role. And hopefully, Mr. Harris has seen an increase in the tax role for his budgets. What we have also put in front of you is economic overview, and this is one of the reports that we can run every day, and we do have copies of those reports here. And this report can be run every day and has very good data. And I'm gonna ask you to look at the November 6th, and I've given you November 7th. And I quickly want to just point out a few things here. On page three, the way I ran this, and we can run this any, anyway, I did a comparison of Swanee, Columbia, and Hamilton. And on page three, we can see the population, Swanee, 43,794, Columbia, 69,299, Hamilton, And so you see the diversity in population. Go down to the per capita, well, let's go to the population average, annual average growth. Swanee is 1%, Columbia is .5%, and Hamilton is 0%. So Swanee is growing at about 1%. Per capita income, Swanee is 18,573, Columbia is 20,000, Hamilton is 14. Poverty level, Swanee is 23.9%, Columbia is 19.9%, Hamilton is 29.3%. Go to page four. High school graduates, Swanee is 41.4%, Columbia is 35.3%, Hamilton is 35.9%. The point I'm making, as you look at the data, you know, many times we look at what's happening in Columbia, and we look at the growth along 90, and that is not the in-all and the be-all. It is the overall quality of life that you have to look at in totality, what's really happening as a whole. And so when you look at even our high school graduates, you know, that number is greater. When you look at even the poverty rate, our population is smaller, and there's not that much of a difference in our poverty rates. Let's go to page six. This is Swanee. The wages, the average wages is 33.33,762 as of this, end of this quarter. It has increased by 2.8% this year. On page, I'm just hitting the highlights.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Before you go further. I was looking at on the Cost of Living Index, where on page six, the average salary for Swanee County, 33,762, Columbia, 37,359, 39, Hamilton County, 37,675. Is that due to the, maybe PCS?
Correct. Yeah, their industry. And that's why it's so important for us to have a diverse economic base, because if you have one economic base that collapses, then basically you lose your entire economic base, your whole economy. On page five, unemployment rate. Our unemployment rate is 3.6%. The national rate is 4.4%, so we're lower than the national rate. Last year this time, our unemployment rate was 5.5%. So overall, you know, we're going in the right direction, and so I just wanted us to kind of see that. On the November 7th report, which is today, what I did was I ran Swanee County, City of Live Oak. And so I'm not gonna go through that, but you can look at the City of Live Oak's number and compare it to... Now, if you see on page six, the City of Live Oak's annual salary is 34,737. So their average wages are higher than the county. So, so these reports are good, and at any point in time you need this report, you let me know. In closing, I really think that this board, your leadership, not only here in Swanee County, but throughout the state, you really should be proud of the policies and the directions from an economic development standpoint that you have taken. And the reason I say that is because you're being benchmarked by other counties. What do I mean? There have been other counties, Columbia, Gatsin County, Madison County, Jefferson County, that actually has called me and the county attorney to come and speak to them about our incentive program, and actually assist them in putting together a similar incentive program. The county attorney has worked with their attorney. I have actually worked with the county commission, or actually presented to their county commission. Our data systems that we have, Gatsin County has purchased a similar system, Workforce North Florida has purchased the same system, Enterprise Florida has purchased the same system. So, you know, when other entities start benchmarking us, it means that we are doing a great job in, in, in economic development. And that's really hats off to you all and the leadership that you're providing, me and others in economic development. Just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Like any questions from the board, Dr. Jackson?
I just said, job well done. Thank you.
Any other staff members have anything they wanted to add tonight? Moving on to Item 27, discuss with possible board action, technology needs... Discuss possible board action, technology needs of the county commission departments. Turn our attention to County Administrator Randy Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I know that Mr. Baker and I have both spoken to probably all of you about this issue before tonight. So I'm going to try to keep it short and give you the summary version best I can. But I want to emphasize, first of all, that the agenda item addresses only the technology needs of county commission departments. Those departments under the Board of County Commissioners. Doesn't say anything about the technology needs of the clerk of the court, the sheriff's department, the property appraiser, or any upgrades that they may entertain in the future at all. And the reason I want to emphasize that is because a lot of the discussion that has occurred has been centered around threats to the security of the clerk's data, and I don't have any interest in going there. Let me start out by saying that I had an opportunity to hire someone that could address a couple of needs in my office, and I took advantage of the opportunity. I hired a man who's worked for the clerk for nearly 10 years, and was, most of the time over there, that he was there, he was IT director. Recently, I think most of you commissioners realize that Mr. John's retired from our shop at the road department. Not too many months back, Mr. Massey retired. And I haven't filled either of those positions with a full-time person and don't plan to. But I saw an opportunity to create some economies of scale like I have with every position in our office building. And those of you that have been there know that the people that work for me have multitudes of responsibilities, and many of which aren't even related to one another. It's hard for me to have someone with a single title because they have so many varying responsibilities. And I like it that way, because that reflects what you see in the private sector every single day. That's the way the private sector works. So when I saw the opportunity, I hired this individual, and I assigned him with the responsibility for handling all of the office side, the paperwork associated with our shop. We bill, we invoice all of the departments that receive service in our shop. We have lots of parts that come in, an incredible paper trail associated with that. Told him that he'd be responsible for that, but that I also wanted him to be responsible for a number of varying IT, or not IT, but technical needs associated with the county commission departments. I want to also emphasize that I don't have a problem with any of Barry Baker's staff and never have ever had any issues with any of them. So I'd like to get that very clear at the front end of this conversation. But I also want to make it clear, too, that the technical needs of the county commission departments have not only been served by Mr. Baker's technical staff. Anyone that has been led to believe that, I want to make it real clear, that simply isn't an accurate statement, if you've been told that. I think I saw Mr. White here earlier, yeah, right here in the back. He works for fire rescue, but he's got some experience tinkering with computers in a way that I've never tinkered with them before, okay? And that's the best language I can come up with, because I'm not an expert. But he's had to come and work on a lot of computers for administration, for fire rescue, and the same is true in the library. Library has someone who handles a lot of the computer triage and issues associated with their department. And you've got other departments that do the same thing and always have, and probably always will. So we've never always picked up the phone and just called Mr. Baker's IT staff and said, "Hey, can you come give us a hand?" But on the occasions that we have, they've been very helpful, and I appreciate that. But I had an opportunity to create some economies of scale and save the taxpayers some money. And that's been one of the primary objectives that I've had with my staff in our office building. So by combining some positions, I had an opportunity to eliminate quite an expense to taxpayers. I contacted the chairman and asked him to come meet with me and have a discussion. And in that discussion, I said, "Listen, as a courtesy, I'd like for you to consider getting in touch with the clerk of the court, and let's have a conversation on a smooth transition." And the chairman did that. So I think it was the beginning of the next week that we had a meeting in Mr. Baker's office. And we had this gentleman there, and one of Mr. Baker's IT personnel was there, or technical people was there, Mr. Baker, the chairman, and myself. And in the conversation, there were a couple of key points. The first that Mr. Baker brought up was the necessity to eliminate this employee's passwords and access and keys to ensure security of the clerk's data. And I agree with that. I agreed then, and I agree today. He won't need any access to their data. In fact, I threw in the sheriff's department, said he won't need any access to their data either. And I'm convinced of that. But he would need access to the county commission department's data, and I guess the majority of that traffic has been routed through a server at the clerk's office. At the same time, there are servers at county administration. I think Fire's got one, and maybe the library, and I don't know who else has their own servers as well. So we had some other conversation and left the meeting, and we recognized that that access was going to be discontinued. I think it was the next day, all of his access was discontinued, everything, including the county commission department. So we started this series of emails back and forth, trying to get it restored. And for about two days, it was restored, his access to the county commission department's data, so that he could perform functions associated with technical services for county commission employees. And then, after a couple of days, it was discontinued again. So when we communicated with Mr. Baker's technical person, he said, "Well, we'll just have to wait until he gets back." I guess he was out of town. Came back to town. I eventually had a conversation with him, and he said, "Well, listen, if it's going to occur, then the Board of County Commissioners is going to have to tell me to allow him to have access to the county commission employees' data and network." Personally, I didn't think it was necessary. Personally, I think that it's incredibly unnecessary. And it gives the appearance of the very thing that I suggested in that meeting when we had it shouldn't take place, and that was a turf war. Because we all work for the taxpayers as a single entity. The most taxpayers look at us as county government regardless, because when they pay their tax bills, they don't care which office it's going to. But in my opinion, it was an opportunity to perform a simple task and enable us to service county commission department employees, and at the same time, do exactly what Mr. Baker had hoped to do, and that was preserve the security of clerk data, sheriff's data, and everyone else's that we didn't get any access to. But that didn't happen, so it's now on the agenda for discussion with you. My interest is real simple, and it's not an uncommon one. In fact, it's very typical in the state of Florida. The vast majority of all technical services are provided by county commissions or under the Board of County Commissioners, not under the clerks. The clerks have their own presence with technical services, and they should. And they need to ensure the security of all of that data. But there is nothing that should prevent county commission departments from having the ability to service their technical needs without going through a clerk's office to accomplish it. I want to share something with you that, because I wasn't sure exactly how many, but we took an opportunity to use the internet to obtain the information on just how many counties there are out there, that where county commissions provide the technical services of county commission departments versus those that rely on clerks of the court to do that for them. And I'm going to pass these out real quick, or just take one of those and pass it on down, if you don't mind. This was actually produced, just an elementary function here. I thought initially, my theory was, that maybe it was just the smaller counties that were still relying on clerks to handle this for them. As it turns out, that isn't absolutely the case. So I used this population data that I printed out, and I just went in there and created a code. You can see all those highlighted in yellow indicate counties where the technical services are being provided under the Board of County Commission. The pink highlight is the counties that actually have the technical services for not only the clerk's office, but also for county commission departments that are provided through the Out of 67 counties in the state of Florida, believe it or not, there's one county that actually indicated that they have no need for technology. There were three counties, including Swanee County, that rely on the clerk for technical services. There were two counties that indicated that they have their own staff under the Board of County Commissioners, but on occasion, they will have someone come over from the clerk's office and assist. So that leaves 61 of the 67 counties that have technical services provided to county commission departments and personnel by county commission staff. 61. So I only share that with you to say that the request that I'm making is not at all uncommon. It isn't abnormal by any stretch. In fact, it's very normal. And if we could not ensure the security of the clerk's data and the sheriff's data and any other constitutional officer that wants to rely on the clerk's office for technical services, if we couldn't ensure that, then I wouldn't be making the request. But we can ensure that that occurs. And for those that are involved in that arena, it's apparently not a very difficult task. In fact, when we started the conversations earlier on, there were multiple opinions, and I've given you those in a packet, on how that could be accomplished. Some may be more complex than others, but to date, I haven't heard from anyone in that arena that indicates that it cannot be accomplished. Also provided you with a third-party opinion. The gentleman's name is Greg Revels. I've never met the man, but he was willing to give us an opinion as a neutral party on whether or not that could be accomplished. You've got a copy. I gave commissioners a copy of the information from him, but I'll read you, because I couldn't understand all the technical jargon associated with his initial response, or even some of these others, even the one from David. I don't have a clue what the heck he wrote. I mean, he outlined a formula for getting there, but I'll be honest with you, David, I don't have any idea what you wrote. I mean, you did a good job, I'm convinced of it, I just don't understand it. So we had two other opinions. Mr. Revels was one of them. So I wanted a more elementary response to the question, and I'll give you a copy of this one. But the question was finally asked, you know, can this be accomplished and preserve the clerk's data without any problem? His response was, yes. This solution will secure the clerk's data. What was offered to him was, Greg, in your opinion, will the clerk's data be secure if we use, David, you might understand this, ACLs and/or active directory, directory to disallow access to the servers that house that data? His response was, yes, the solution will secure the clerk's data. But there are other solutions, plenty of other solutions. And one, in fact, that I was talking to someone the other day about, and I don't really understand all of this, but that was that, you know, we could just make an absolute separation and create a separate domain for the county commission departments and be done with it, and not have any threats, any challenges to any one's security on either side at all. So that's a possibility as well. But in any event, the catalyst for all of this, in my mind, was to create some economies of scale, save the taxpayers some money, and take an employee and cross-train them like I have everyone else in my office, and accomplish a task that everyone agrees needs to be accomplished by someone. So what I'm asking, Commissioners, is that the board make a decision to allow this to occur. And whether or not it has to be done by allowing him access through the clerk's systems is immaterial to me. I'm interested in the safest way to accomplish it. And that's it. And I have no interest in affecting anything else that the clerk is involved in or planning to do with any constitutional officers or otherwise. That's the simple request.
All right. Any questions from the board?
If it's all right, I'd like to say, first of all, this is not a turf war. It's where that the IT functions of the, for the commission has been carried out, has been carried out since 2004, 2005 with the clerk's office. I just felt that it should come before the board, before the board to take and make that Mr. Harris is exactly right. It's where that US board do have the opportunity to take and use your IT function or have it serviced any way you please. It's where that our concern was, is where we have two people. We emptied a spot within our office. It's where the, I think that it can be handled a lot cheaper in keeping it as a centralized unit to take and address the board's needs. As far as I know, we haven't had any complaints. We would like to continue to service you if that is the way that you see fit. I see that there's an extra cost in personnel. There's the extra costs in equipment replication, and a loss in volume purchasing, and purchasing I feel that our office can handle the IT needs of the county more efficiently and more effectively if these duties, if these duties are not divided. But I thought US board should be the one to take and make that, I guess, as a determination. If the county does choose to remove the IT function, I am requesting the funding to remain as it is currently for the amount that y'all have provided for our office. The reason being is where that by removing the county function, it would remove about 50 to 55 PCs. From our present IT department oversight, while at the same time, we would be picking up the responsibility for 60 new PCs with the smart cop system. If you remember, earlier in the year, it's where the sheriff's office also applied for a grant for the body cameras through the board here. And it's where that, I don't know if you realize it or not, but it's where that our, it's the sheriff's office, it's where they were able to obtain that grant, along with your help. Right now, we don't fully understand our role with the property appraisers office as far as the new software that they're looking to put in place. But it's where that we also know that we will be playing a part with that. And so that's further justification for trying to keep, it's the funding for the third position within our office. And also, if you remember this past budget year, it's where you approved the computer wiring for the courthouse to include our offices. The judges will be paying for their portion. It would also include that the sheriff's office as well located in the courthouse. It's where that, like I say, this is not a turf war. I just, I thought it should be your determination and how that you wanted your IT needs carried out. And it's where that we will continue to work along with you. I have David and Becky here from my office. If you have any... If you have any questions, also, our security counsel, it's where he's our contact and the person that we have hired to handle that. It's where they are also here and can handle any questions that you may have of a technical side. I'm not even going to try and stand up here and tell you that I understand everything. I'm kind of like Randy, it's where I don't understand everything technical there is. It's where I depend on their expertise in order to help out with that. With that, that's where I'll turn it over to you and if you have any questions or if you would like for them to speak, it's where we can do that as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fleming.
Mr. Baker said that you could, you could do it the less than what Mr. Harris said. Mr. Harris, it would be cheaper. Is that what you said?
I think our office can do it cheaper because you don't have to have a redundancy in any of your system or software or even, even as purchasing. If you remember about a year, a year or so ago, it's where we went into, it's the three entities went together and we bought 100 make line coming into our offices, into the courthouse. The courthouse serves as a hub. And it's where that line is able to take in service, the sheriff's office, the county offices, as well as, as well as our office and finance. So it's where that that line goes out to the fire stations, it goes out to the, it's the other county offices as well, your building department, things like that. I'm not trying to undermine what Randy's trying to do, and he's exactly right. A lot of the counties have gone to having their own system. It's where that, it's just that, my issue with what occurred last week, our office didn't have a problem with, with the person that you have hired for doing some troubleshooting within the office, but it's where the admin rights, it's where that we don't, the admin rights had been contained within our office and that was a security issue. I don't think you'll find any company in which that the admin rights go outside of that. Randy is right, it's where that a lot of the duties can be, it can be moved off of the system. It's where I think even if you choose to take and put a server room or something in the building department or something like that, it goes directly, we have a direct line on the courthouse to the building department and it can be done and we can set up service there, whatever y'all choose, but there is going to be a cost associated with it. And with the additional work that will be taken on, it's where that those are, it's where we're still going to have a need for the third person within the office.
Well, my computer right now, mine is not working. I use both my passwords and I can't even get on, get in it. So that mean that is David, I meant, not David, but is the person that you hired, he's responsible for our computer, Mr. Harris?
I'm going to say that as, as nice as I can, no. He's been denied access to everything. So it can be accomplished before you leave here tonight. I'm sure that either Vicki or David won would take care of you if needed it.
I tried both passwords and won't let me deny both.
Well, I'm sure that they can help you sometime tonight.
I think, Mr. Fleming, it's where, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but it's where I spoke to you yesterday about the smart cop and you were telling me some of the issues that you face and because you already work with a smart cop in your current position. And it's where that whenever you have an issue, it's where you need to have someone there that's able to address those issues, someone that's able to see what you got and be able to help you work through it. Otherwise, you're going to have personnel that are, it's where that they're down. And it's where that, so I think that's just further justification of knowing that we need personnel. Like I say, if you choose for us to continue to do your work, we'd love to be able to support you and to accommodate your needs. But again, that's the wishes of the board.
Mr. Chairman? Any questions from the board?
My biggest question would be payroll. If it gets split up, something has to coordinate payrolls. So how, how would that work? I mean, if you got an off-site server that's collecting payroll information, how does it, does it send it to your server over to finance or?
I can answer that question.
That's fine. It's my question, just how's payroll get worked?
We export it from the county administration office to the finance department.
So you can export, you can export without any rights to go into the server then, just a straight export?
That's correct. But, you know, I was going to say that the idea of saving money, buying in bulk, we purchase on NJPA, you know, the nationally bid, volume contracts with local governments, sheriff's association contracts, all of those other types of entities unless we decide to go to bid and that we compare them to those contracts that were already competitively bid. And there is nothing that would prevent the clerk's office and the county commission administration office from at the beginning of the year saying, how many PCs do you need? How many do we need? And we can all bid those together. So that can still be achieved and do what I have asked. There's no issue there at all. You know, this started with the issue of security and I'm not interested in challenging security, but no one has suggested that this cannot be accomplished. No one anywhere has suggested that because it can be accomplished and the volume purchasing can be accomplished. And we all have servers and we all have the ability to hit the send button and communicate with one another. And it isn't just the hardware in the courthouse that needs to be done. There are some other areas where the same thing needs to be done with the voice-over IP and ultimately we'll save some money. That hardware is probably going to be done by contractor though and it has to be done during business hours.
It'll also require some of our, our staff time as well and time to identify the different receptacles and everything like that.
The one thing that I had suggested in that meeting when we met over there, that I think it was on a Monday, was that if you ever needed the assistance of this gentleman, you pick up the phone and call and I can send him to help out. Again, I'm coming back to the idea that the taxpayers don't see these differences at all. They pick up the tab. And if you need my man to come over there and help out, to help pick up the slack, even if you hire a third person, if you need to keep that funding and hire the third person and you need a fourth person on occasion, I don't see a downside anywhere. Him getting in a vehicle and driving over there and saying, hey, let me help out, let me go help identify those locations where these hardwired items need to be placed. It doesn't make any difference to me. This isn't a complex issue in my mind at all.
Anyone else have any questions?
Chairman, I do. Several questions, but I want to stick with one area. My understanding, my understanding is that the more centralized our IT services is for the county, the better control that we have over our systems, our, better knowledge there is for our specific issues and the better coordination there is with the individual departments. The problem that we have as a county government probably stems back to state statute and that gives constitutional officers the right to handle their own IT services if they so choose. But as you've spoken, as we've spoken and you told me, informed me that if a constitutional officer does do so, they separate themselves from the central servers, they basically provide their own IT support themselves. And the problem that I see with that here is the, and Mr. Bavat, correct me and maybe how I say it if you need to, but the statutory responsibility that, that lies with the clerk's office over all public records for the Board of County Commission as well as the courts. Is that correct? So if we were to separate, how would then he be able to maintain security over Board of County Commission records?
Are you asking me?
This is Vance Baker. If you had to state it into the microphone so your name is addressed.
Vance Baker with DeFaro Network Solutions. I have been the IT consultant to Swanee County for 16 years. So I know your systems rather well and I know to support infrastructure quite well. Here's a significant amount of truth to what Mr. Harris has shared with you this evening, but one of the things that I would like to share with you concerning the security topic specifically is that Mr. Harris' comment about the private sector utilizing resources for multiple functions is, in fact, accurate. The reality, however, in the private sector is that the consolidation of security within single points of responsibility is also very much a reality. This has been driven by things such as the Sony intrusion, Equifax intrusion, so on so forth, so establishing a single point of accountability, a single point of administrative control, a single point of architectural definition is key. Now, where that single point resides within the county is up to this esteemed body, but nonetheless, that is certainly one of the concerns of security. I conducted a security assessment for the county at the request of Mr. Baker in July of this year. And one of the things that I discovered was that there is no consistency of security policy, rights and responsibilities, that there are no, that there's a lack of consistency in the way that security is managed throughout the various offices within the county. And over the last 70, 75 days or so, we've attempted to rectify that and we have made good progress within the clerk's office, within the, within the IT staff that supports the clerk's office. But security is much more, much more than just administrative access, who controls what password works, who controls what domain a person is affiliated with. Security encompasses much bigger things such as business continuity. And that's one of the things that we've enjoyed within the 75, last 75 days. Prior to Hurricane Irma, we had no business continuity strategy within the county. That has been corrected now. I'm the author of the interagency agreement that provides for the business continuity between the various county offices and the school boards. We set up sharing of data center resources, which goes to the point of information security. We have the ability now because of some of the achievements we've made on, within Mr. Baker's office concerning the elevation of security and attacking those findings that came out of the information security assessment in July of this year. So while there are a number of ways to achieve shared access, to achieve shared administration, so to speak, the reality is, in the government sector as well as in the private sector, to the extent that that burden falls upon a single set of shoulders, then the information is better protected, information continuity is achievable and more importantly, more importantly, all of the information by the various county entities can be made accessible via common infrastructure. So any questions regarding those comments?
Yeah, on your comment, you said that in July and it's not, it's getting better. So that mean that there was, security was lacking? Is that what you were saying?
There were a significant number, there were more than two dozen findings within the assessment. Yes, sir.
Well, I won't. I'm going to go there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Okay, you said you gave Mr. Baker a report in July. Is it a written report?
Third day of August, I believe, sir.
Third day of August.
The assessment was conducted in July and the report was delivered on the third day of August, I believe.
Okay, you also mentioned that there is an interagency agreement.
Yes, sir.
Who are the parties to the agreement?
The agreement is, I believe, between the clerk's office and the school board for the sharing of data center facilities so that, so that the purpose of business continuity or the objective of business continuity is achievable.
Okay, the county's not a party to that.
I'm not quite sure who reviewed that agreement, sir, but I.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm saying if you're, if they're sharing information that is county information with an interagency agreement, and I haven't seen it.
Time out. We're not sharing information, we're sharing facilities. There is quite a difference.
Okay, well, that's why I want to make sure.
Yes, sir. No information sharing is going on.
If I understand, you're sharing facilities on the servers then, space, in other words, on the servers and security through the servers? Is that correct, Dave? Okay, well, if they don't have any access, they, they share the facility getting in there to be able to get access to it. As I understand, what Mr. Harris is seeking is to have someone from our agency, the board, have access to be able to get that information that, that we need, whether or not we contact the clerk's office or not. I mean, that's just a very general way of putting it. Now, to be able to have access to our information, we have to contact the clerk before we can get access to our information?
No, sir. I mean, the, all the board's information is freely, I mean, is easily available for them right now and that's not even the issue.
Okay, well, then explain to the board here, what is the real issue here that's creating a security problem?
Well, if it was just fixing a printer, maybe, you know, helping somebody with a Word document, things like that, but it's virtually unheard of in the IT industry to have someone that has any kind of elevated privileges on your network, whether it's a separate domain, that use the same network infrastructure not to have or not answer to head of IT or his boss.
Okay, well, I'm understanding from this interagency agreement that you're now giving access by the school board to, to that.
We have physical servers there. However, they can't access those servers as far as, they can't sit down and do anything to those servers. They're replication servers.
Okay, so we're, we're trying to be able to get information that's not, that, that is our information that's on the same servers?
Right now, the only information that Board of County Commissioners, we run time clock server. And we run a remote time clock server for them to dial in and everything. And of course, we has, they don't have access, direct access to the finance.
Okay.
That serves both, you know, Board of County Commissioners and the clerk's office.
Okay, so if we have a problem with remote access, okay, and we have somebody that is available onsite to be able to access or do the work there, what is the problem with, not technical stuff, what's the problem with having a person that's in, that works for the board and not a clerk employee that can fix a problem that would be with the remote access?
Once again, you have someone access our physical network.
Okay, when I dial in, when I dial in myself and use my computer to go through and send an email, I'm accessing, physically accessing your system, am I not?
No, you're virtually accessing. You're talking about him walking into our server room.
Okay, well, okay, no. And so what we're talking about here is not the ability to have somebody get in and utilize the data that we need to be able to operate here, is that you don't want somebody to have access to be able to walk into that room where the. where the servers are to be able to provide that.
All very good questions, sir, and it does have a logical as well as a physical component. And certainly, the physical component is a concern, as it would be for any agency. We wouldn't want someone, because he has some IT knowledge, walking into a wiring closet in the sheriff's office. So your point's well taken, absolutely. But the concern here is that some years ago, I'm not sure what that quantity of years is, five, seven years ago, the county functions were consolidated into a single domain, so. And essentially, what that means is that all of the eggs were removed from the crate and one was left, okay? And that one egg provides for all IT services within the county. At the time, it may have been a good decision. In today's world, where the clerk has specific data, the board has specific data, all of this data resides within servers that are in the same domain, okay? So that means that a Board of County Commissioner, asset, personnel, whatever, accessing that domain potentially can access the same resources that the clerk's data resides upon. So, to achieve your objective, the logical solution would be to separate the domains, or to achieve the concern, I should say. The logical solution would be to separate the domains so that the Board of County Commissioners has their own specific work area, so to speak, the clerk has their specific work area. But undertake that today, given how fast things have moved, activities transition, hiring and firing over the last 30 days, that's a monumental effort. That's not something that can be accomplished overnight. And it is, in responding to what, to the events that Mr. Harris has described, it probably resulted, that consolidation of domain, I'm sorry, that single domain that's had multiple administrators, their access was probably cut off at the time that the person went to another department, simply as a fundamental and industry standard security measure. Putting too many cooks in the kitchen is just not a good thing. Until those domains, those logical domains can be separated, again, it's advisable to limit the administrative visibility to that one domain, simply so that accidents don't happen, okay?
All right, I would understand that, I mean, we can go ahead and do that. When they did the consolidation of your eggs into one basket, they took all the things that were, what I'm going to call was Swanee, you know, S U dash clerk dot com, and then they had, you know, S.
Swanee Gov.
Yeah, I mean, all of this, and now they put it under Swanee Gov.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, that's having all of those separate domains. That was only done a couple of years ago, you know, to be able to do that. But three or four years ago, maybe, at the most.
I think it was four or five, but yes, sir.
Well, whenever I, I've only been county attorney for three years, and when I first got my first, you know, it was a different address than what I have now.
Right.
Yes, sir.
That's just the email.
Well, I understand, but I'm.
That's not the rest of the network has been. I've been here four and a half years, and it was that way when I started altogether. It has been.
What I, what my concern is, is that we, and I say we, the board, you know, have responsible. Barry's job is custodian of the records for the county, under the official records and, you know, that type of thing. We have information that we are required to produce, you know, that, under just plain old public records requests, that we need to have access to to be able to get, you know, to those documents. Without having to go through, as a board, without having to go through the clerk to then find, how do I get to those documents? Because we have time limits that we have to respond to the documents to be able to get on there. Now, having, what I'm talking about is with an administrator, to be able to go in, if we have a separation, like apparently you have, although you have a copy, and it's just for lack of a better word, you have a copy of the other information that the school board and stuff is accessing. Now, okay, am I not understanding that correctly?
School board doesn't access anything to the clerk's office.
And that's, but the point I'm trying to make is, why can't we have access to our information without going through the clerk's office?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, but if I have a problem with my computer, my computer is not being able to call up and get that access to those documents, okay? Right now, I have to call somebody in IT, you, for Vicky, I guess, you know, to come fix whatever my access problem is, to be able to get to that information. Is there a prohibition from having a third person that works for the board also be able to do that? What are they going to access that is problematic?
And this has, this has nothing to do with who he's hired, it has nothing to do with personalities, it's nothing to do with trust. It's called best practices. If he was just going to come look and say, oh, well, your wireless is turned off, that's not even an issue. But when you start passing out administrative privileges that can make changes on your laptop, make changes on your desktop, you can install any software you want to, well, that's a hole into our network. And you keep punching little holes everywhere. You might not intend to, that might not be the issue, but it's something that we wouldn't know about because we don't have, that person doesn't answer to me or to Mr. Baker. Understand that?
Well, I'm not seeing how me putting a piece of software on my computer is going to punch a hole in your network, okay? And this is, I mean.
I'm not laughing, I'm not laughing at you. That, I mean, I see it, I don't know how many times, you know, oh, well, you know, here, I'm on this website, they say, let's try this, you know, try this software or whatever. I'm not saying anybody does it intentionally, but the first thing you know, you download it, you install it, you've got malware. You've got a keyboard that.
Okay, well, that would be on my unit, but if it's going to go.
If it's attached to our network, it could spread.
But don't you have security at that central point that would take care of that malware as it comes into the system?
Yes, we should.
We should.
But, why shouldn't, I mean, I don't understand the reasoning to even open that possibility. Because if you open that possibility, this stuff moves so fast. I mean, every day, I don't even know how many new viruses, malware. These companies can't keep up with the hackers out there. So it's possible something gets through until they find it's in the wild and create a solution. It might be a day, it might be a week. A lot can happen, everything.
Okay.
Let me offer this. Let me offer this elaboration if I may. The challenge before us collectively right now is that one of the things that came out of the security assessment is we're not all singing from the same hymnal right now, okay? And as a result of that finding, there is the necessity to put standards in place in terms of how systems, endpoints such as your computer, servers, network resources are going to be managed. We're making headway, but right now, the mechanism that we're using to ensure that this information environment operates each and every day is access control, administrative access control. Now, you are certainly within your purview to say that access control needs to be shared. The, what you, what you need to be aware of is that sharing that access control within an environment in which the ground rules or administrative access are yet to be defined is dangerous.
Okay, so what I'm understanding is from 2004 then up until now, when they've been doing the information here, we don't have those administrative controls and guidelines that you're now suggesting that we haven't had for 13 years, right, up to this point?
I found no evidence. I found.
Okay, so we've had 13 years of the clerk doing all of this, but we, we're not, we're not getting what we're supposed to have? Or we not, we haven't done it?
I'll say it simply that you don't have a governance model in place today.
This network has been fairly secure, and there are issues. You can go to any network in the country.
I don't disagree with that. I'm not disputing that.
We, one of the first things I did, one, you know, yes, there were some issues even when I started four and a half years ago, and we addressed those, a lot of those along the way. Can't address every single thing overnight because it's always a work in progress, and that's what we still are. You know, and as far as like access and everything, when you talk about that underlying software, it controls everything on this network, that and like firewall and everything. So if they have access to that, basically you have the keys to the kingdom, okay?
Okay.
And that's one thing we stopped, because there were several people that had that. When I started here, that ended.
Okay, so who has king, how many people have keys to the kingdom today?
Today?
Yeah.
Two people.
You and Vicky.
That's it.
That's it. All right, so if you hire a third person, Barry hires a third person into your department, he will also have keys to the kingdom.
Right.
Okay. What's the matter with us having a key?
Because you would have keys to everyone's kingdom, and that person.
No, 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 no.
But that person.
They just said that we can get a key to our information without having that person with a key have access to y'all's information.
You want to split the domain.
No, you just.
He said if you split the domains, you would.
With three, with three different solutions here, those three solutions are not, don't all entail having to split the domain? As I, when I read it, is that correct?
And like I said before, you still have the issue of someone physically.
Well, I mean, if physically access to a building and the servers is one thing. I mean, to keep somebody out and to get permission from Barry to be able to walk into a particular building.
I'm not talking about that kind of, they have access, maybe even physical isn't the right word.
Okay.
They have access to the network, which houses all information. But they don't have, I know, and that's where I say it's not a matter of trust. They wouldn't be answerable to Barry. If an issue arose, what recourse would I have?
Okay, well, that's what our responsibility is, is for our information, I mean.
But if they can get on the network and affect our information or the sheriff's information.
I thought you just said you could lock them out of that information.
No. If we split the domains is the best solution, if that's.
Is it the only solution?
What, to split the domain?
Yes.
I mean, if that's the board's wish.
With all due respect, sir, there are hundreds of solutions.
Well, that's, and that's the point I'm trying to work all the way around, you know, to get here.
But again, with all due respect, hundreds of solutions does not necessarily mean that hundreds of solutions fit well within a governance model. And it's imperative, it's imperative from a statutory compliance perspective, from a regulatory compliance perspective, that a governance model is at the heart of what you do.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Yeah, but I want to, go ahead, and then I'm going to ask the board a different question. Go ahead.
I've probably got more questions now than when the whole conversation started a while ago. Clearly, this can be accomplished by splitting the domain. Clearly, the Board of County Commissioners can have your staff handle security measures. The clerk's staff can do that. I think what Mr. Pravat was alluding to was the fact that for the last 13 years, it wasn't the county commission department staff that was controlling this when there were what I will call weaknesses in the system that existed under the clerk. And that is not a criticism of the clerk or any of his staff, because I recognize how all of these things change almost daily. Mr. Baker did a great job. We had the audit, we had a conversation, they made changes. 30 days from now, they're going to be up against a new challenge. Probably next week they will. So I want to qualify my statement. It wasn't anyone's fault that works for the clerk or the clerk, but it certainly wasn't ours. Is there any reason to believe that we can't employ our own technical service within the county commission departments and handle those things and handle security, just like the clerk handles security? Just like 61 other counties are handling their own, that are not relying on the clerk's office to do it for them? I promise you, if this had started with the sheriff 15 years ago, because nobody else was doing it, then we'd be having this conversation with the sheriff right now or someone else. You know, I shared with all of you commissioners before, I think, and this is just a theory. When you go through the minutes that Mr. Musgrove so graciously provided to whatever he could find on this topic, it's pretty clear that when the Florida legislature mandated that county commissioners pay for technical services for the courts, for the courts in the early 2000s, that it started creating a new dynamic there. And I think for many commissions, they, this issue wasn't even on the radar at the time. So probably there were more county commissioners relying on the clerk's office 10 years ago for technical services than there are today because of an evolution that had occurred at the time. Mine's a real simple question. I have no interest in interfering with any number of people that clerk wants to hire to handle technical services for the clerk's office, the sheriff, or anyone else. Mine's a real simple question. And that's of us servicing the needs of county commission departments under the county commission. That's the issue.
That was the question. I was fixed to ask the board to try to eliminate some of this conversation. Does the board have any desire to change what we're doing? If the board doesn't, then this whole conversation is for naught.
I just want.
If the board does, then we need to enter into the conversation on what direction we're going to go and how we're going to do it.
Mr. Chairman, I, since the state mandated this and by, and the county commission provided services, if the commission is providing services, why the clerk of the court handling this situation? This is just a question. My next question, my next thing is, is I'm for what's going to be less for the county, you know, because each, we all paying, we pay taxes. I'm from what's less for the county, for the constituent.
Mr. Chairman. You got a question?
Clyde, I don't have an answer to your second question, but on that first one, the clerk's doing it because the board put it under him.
In 2004.
Yeah, however that went.
Zoomed it under him.
Yeah. Well, I think they probably put it under him through discussion and through consensus. I don't think it was ever a vote to do it, but there was discussion.
I think it just evolved that way.
Yeah.
Just for Mr. Harris, what kind of, what's the advantages of us having someone there at your office? Is it real-time information together? Is it certain files or folders or personnel information that we need to acquire immediately? And our, I don't know, does our projects go through there?
Number of issues, number of issues, so to say. Number of issues, number of issues, let's say, is for me, in my mind, that's where we need to be long-term regardless. Doesn't need to be under another constitutional officer for any reason. And that's why almost all of the counties in the state of Florida have recognized that. But having said that, some of the benefits, and this, I'm not, have no interest in being critical of Mr. Baker's IT personnel. They do a magnificent job, okay? So I don't have any criticisms of them. But mine is a responsibility for the daily operations of every county commission department. That's what I'm charged with. And that has to do with every other asset that we have, and I had no idea until just about a week ago that that did not include our computers until Mr. Baker made that statement. I didn't envision this being a big issue or even coming to the county commission, to be honest with you. But having said that, real-time response right now, I've got an employee in there that I can hold accountable. Mr. Baker wants to hold his accountable, and I agree with him. I want the same type of accountability for the county commission departments. That's the type of accountability I have to ensure with all of our departments on everything else except computers. Mr. Baker wants that accountability for his employees. I want the same for mine, because those are our departments, not his departments. Those are our employees, not his employees, and we can handle that. And I know that I've got a person that can handle it. One issue that you run into, and I, you know, David might be able to speak to this, I've, it's happened before. They have the ability, and my person would have this ability, if we used our server and split the domain and put all the security measures in place. If we do that, our employee can remotely correct some things in other offices, and they do that from time to time. That's pretty standard, probably standard in most counties. My employee can't do that today, okay? He can go do some things physically in their offices, but he is prevented from doing that because of this issue that we just discussed, not having access to that network to accomplish that task. And he should be allowed to do that. That's what I've hired him to do. But having said that, I think his salary was $30 or $31 an hour working for Mr. Baker, and that's probably in line with the standards that are out there. I don't have any idea. I can't speak to that. But when I hired him, I said that I was creating some economies of scale, some benefit to our offices. I was paying a man $25, $27 an hour to do, to run our shop. I'm not going to fill that position. So I took a part of that, and I took a part of another position, and I combined them, and I'm getting the IT work and the shop office work done for $30 an hour. And now Mr. Baker, who gave us a number of 55 PCs, I think, doesn't have to deal with those anymore. So he isn't paying $30 an hour to someone to deal with my 55 PCs, and the difference between those figures is about $15 that I'm paying to have it done. So I affected three positions, one under the clerk at $30-plus dollars an hour, two under, one in the road department at $25, $27, another one at 25 or 26 in administration. You take all those numbers combined, over $85 an hour, and I'm doing it for 30. That's a pretty good deal to the taxpayer. Taxpayer gets a big bang for the buck. And if Mr. Baker takes me up on my opportunity to loan him my employee when he needs him, which I have no problem with, the taxpayer still make out. Now, I can accomplish that. And you go to each one of those people that works in our office, and you'll find that every one of them are cross-trained and everyone else has responsibilities, and that's how you create some economies of scale and savings to taxpayers. You know, I inherited an office with seven people. Every one of them were trained in this little thing, and they didn't know anything about the next person's little thing that they did. And I had seven people that did that, and I did away with that and tried to stretch the taxpayer's dollar and give them the best bang for the buck, and that's what we're doing. And that's what I'm going to do with this IT issue, if I'm allowed, to have my employee service the IT needs of the county commission departments. And fire rescue has a tremendous need. They're always loaded up down there, and they're a block down the road, and we can accomplish that. So there are a number of benefits. All of the other counties are doing it, few exceptions, three, and longer term, I think we're better off doing just that and separating the domains, if that's what it takes to ensure the security that I think the clerk desires to have.
Got a quick question for one of the, I guess, the IT personnel. The, what we're talking about with access, it's not for the information, it's strictly for repair, upgrades. They have access to the information, correct? So all the access that they're requesting would be if there's downtime or a repair that needs to be made to, to the system? I've just, I've heard information thrown around and access to the system. I know how to turn it on. I'm just trying to make sure I know exactly what their request is. Anyone else have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. Who, Mr. Berry, Mr. Baker, who is ultimately responsible for our computer equipment at
Thing I'd say right now is where that it has, has still resided within our office. And now, as far as Mr. White, Mr. White has worked very well with our office and stuff. Mr. White doesn't have access either, neither does the sheriff's department to the servers. It's where they have someone, they have someone in their office that works to do troubleshooting and things like that to make sure that their, their systems are, are working, if there are problems. It's where the Sam and Mr. White both, it's where they still access our services and try to...
Okay, I understand that, but let's just take the sheriff's department as an example. He's another constitutional officer, just as we are. Those, all those computers that he purchased that you guys are setting up for SmartCop, with SmartCop?
That's correct.
Who owns those computers ultimately?
The sheriff.
Okay.
We, we own the computers, you know, but then we, we call it for actually, you know, pay part of the salaries here for the IT to seven of them, and then give them troubleshooting what may occur.
So you're paying back to, for salary compensation back to the clerk's office?
Only a small amount, I think.
Okay, so...
Do you have a consulting agreement, a science consulting agreement?
Software.
Do you have a consulting agreement with the clerk's office?
I have an agreement.
Okay.
It's where that I can get with David and he can tell you what we have.
Okay, so the reason why I asked that question is because if I own a computer, and I own several computers, as a matter of fact, I used to manage a group of people who I lent out my computers to. I didn't want them touching my computers as far as getting in and fixing anything. Thankfully, ultimately, we had a contract with the company that I worked for that handled all the IT. But I guess my point is, is I wouldn't want somebody working on my computers that didn't, wasn't ultimately responsible to the person who is responsible for those computers. That's why I asked that question. Now, it's easy to fix that problem from the Board of County Commissioners issue. We, we pretty much, we control the facilities, so we control all of the, all of the infrastructure for the networks, but it's still being serviced from IT. We could still own our own computers and work on our own computers. This is not an issue over technical support as much as it is about access to server information, which does have a technical component, but it's not a help desk. It sounds like to me, and maybe I'm wrong, that Mr., what Mr. Harris is asking for is our own help desk support, somebody in-house who can, somebody can pick up the phone, call and say, hey, can you fix this on my computer? If he knows his limitations and he knows what he can and can't fix, the only question is whether or not the IT department's going to give him permission to work on the computer, because at this point, you guys are the ones that purchase the computers. We fund the purchase, but you still purchase the computers and you maintain the computers, correct? So it's, it's, it's a situation where we've got to work it out, but it sounds like that if we're going to, what's the term, we're going to draw that red line in sand and say, hey, you know, this is it. I'm not going to do this. We're going to have to split all the depart, or the department completely up from the, from the Board of County Commissioners, from the clerk's office, then we're pushed to put in a situation where we have to purchase a lot of equipment. And I'm unwilling to go back into a budget and amend a budget to do something like that in the middle of the year. But I am willing to consider for future reference, some, the future option to be able to work this thing out. My biggest concern is, is we've got two, we've, we've really got two constitutional offices that are, doesn't sound like they're working together really well to come up with the solution that fits everybody, and that's my concern. So until we do, I really don't want to get in the middle of it. I want, I want us to work it out. And our designee is the county administrator to work with everyone. So maybe that makes sense, maybe it doesn't make sense. Maybe I'm talking in circles.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just like to make a brief comment. I'm not convinced that there's a massive expenditure associated with what needs to be done here at all. I do respect your consideration for that, but I'm not convinced that it's there. Neither am I convinced that it can't be accomplished, what I'm asking for. It can be, clearly it can be. I'm not understanding the resistance. That's just...
I think the resistance, and this is me being presumptuous of the board, but like most people sitting out here, there's only maybe five people in this room that know what they're talking about when it comes to IT. And that's the honesty gosh, one, two, three, four, no, four, excuse me. And the, I think it's the idea that nobody wants to jump into something that we're unsure where the cost is going to come from. There may be a cost, there may not be a cost. I don't know, on the, on the part of adding new servers, new connections, new fiber optics, replacing a, starting a new system, there's just, there's unknown for me. I don't know if, if they can split the servers. It's just, and I'll be honest with you, I don't...
We have those.
What I'm saying is the domain, I might, I'm not even going to pretend to use the correct terms, but it's, to, to, to split what they're wanting to split, I would be willing to bet nobody up here knows if it really can or can't be done. And we're completely relying on both sides to tell us what to do, and I think that's where the holdup is for the board, is we got one side saying one thing, one side saying another thing, and it's just, I don't know.
I, I think that Mr. Baker is accurate. He answered the question. Yes, it can be done by splitting the domains. Now, what's that going to cost? I don't have any idea.
I don't, I don't have an idea either, for me that...
I believe that. I believe it can't be done overnight, but it's doable. So if we need to know what it would cost to do it, then maybe we should ask that question.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest just what you were just going at? Can we just simply ask the IT people to get together? Mr. Baker, we'd love to have your input into this thing, especially being able to get together, find out what is it exactly that Mr. Harris wants to accomplish and what it would take, and then let's sit down and look at the cost of it, come back to the board. At that point, let's look at it at that point. Would that make sense to you guys?
Yeah, I mean, I understand what Mr. Baker and the IT department is wanting. It's, it's all security-based. It's not a turf war. I've had many conversations with Mr. Harris and with Mr. Baker, and I'm convinced his intentions are for the best of the county, on, on both ends, but I believe it's a security issue for the clerk's department, and I don't begrudge them or fault them for that at all. There's been people in the past that have had access to the servers that, under the past department head for IT, I believe no longer have it because it was facing the same issues that they're facing now. People outside of that department having access. So the big thing is security, the second big thing is cost, and I just think, for me, I don't have a way to answer those questions other than relying on the professionals that do it.
And cost is a big thing for me. I don't know, we, it may be easy for us to, to start this process and think it's only going to cost $10,000, end up costing $100,000. I don't know. But I do think we, and Mr. Harris and his people, probably need some type of access at some point in time, whether we take that on as a whole or we work with the clerk's office. But again, it comes back to cost, and I would like to see some numbers on that before I can make it. There's a lot of things been thrown around here tonight, security things, possibly spending money to make this happen, or do we need to split it completely like y'all, you suggested?
Mr. Chairman, I see, I see the fire team.
Yeah, I was just asking him a question.
Before he, before he say anything, my suggestion would be if we, we brought this back to another meeting and, and do allow Mr. Harris and Mr. Baker and the staff back there to, to come with, come with some kind of solution to get this taken care of, because it, it got my head spinning, you know? Talking about security and, 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 basically, I'm kind of confused. I just need some more information.
I understand. Real quick question before you go into what, you had, I believe, I believe it was Mr. White, at one point in time, did he not have access to the server?
We had access to certain items to make corrections to our system. As, as exactly what those items were, I cannot tell you, because that's IT, and I'm, my head will start hurting, the same issues are hurting right now.
We're in the same boat.
I can assure you. That's language I don't even want to try to, try to talk, but at one point, he did have access to certain items associated with the server.
And that access ended for basically the same reasons we're talking about now, because security?
But let me say this, we have had issues in the past with our rescue partner. This is not the first time that we have been involved with this situation under previous negotiations. And we say, we, as a partner, decided early on, we post most of our data outside of the clerk. So we have access to the people that need to fix it and fix it. So the issues that we are prone to having is because we're others to make. I think the issue that you all are agreeing with, John, is the cost of the issue, is there's a software program that controls the domain that they talk about. Any computer that attaches to that domain, that network, has to have permission to get anything free, even if you go to the internet. This software controls that. Anybody that has bandwidth, has the ability to adjust this program to allow computers to get to what they need or don't need, or what servers to access or not access. When all your computers are on the domain, they control it. So if something don't work, even though this individual has capability, he cannot fix anything that has to go through this domain or this network. If this is simple hardware issue or a computer issue, for the most part, they can fix it. So that's where the hands become hot, because their concern is that person having access to that software has access to change all kinds of points for everybody's computer.
Right. How, how long ago did you lose your access?
Hopefully, yeah. It's, it's probably been a good, I was going to say two and a half to three, on my, my timeframe, I'm thinking, but in the...
So you lost it for security reasons under the previous IT director?
Yeah, they gave us access to do some of our own work. They gave us access to do some of our own work, but then they have pulled a lot of that away. But they also, it's not just the access, they're also restricting such as where you can go on the internet or different things. It controls more than just access. So with us, with all our stuff being posted outside the network, there has been a lot of issues and a lot of complications getting us through this domain and through this network to get to our stuff. We've had to open up for it to address security. We've had conversations with your security consultant to try and get them much more now to get the system protected. They are progressively restricting the system.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is the individual that cut your access due to security reasons is the individual that we've hired. And now he's wanting access to the same system that he cut you out of, that he deemed a security risk when he cut you out of it. So that's why I'm seeing an issue with security as being my big, big thing here.
You can make one comment.
Yes, sir.
What I see, the elemental issue, the problem right here is accountability on both sides. I think in Mr. Baker's side, that he's concerned that if somebody's in the system that doesn't work for him and does something within the system, then how can he hold that person accountable for doing something since it doesn't work for him anymore? And then I'm sure on your side, if you got somebody working for you, you wanna be able to hold them accountable too. So I think the whole issue here is accountability. If somebody's working for somebody, then that person, their boss is who holds them accountable. But if somebody else can get in the system, then who's gonna hold that person accountable? I think that's the initial issue right here. And I'm not saying it's a turf war, but it's getting to be where we're splitting hairs. And I think we should go find out the cost, find out if there's better ways. We've brought it all up to a head here. We've had an hour or longer worth of discussion, and I really feel like that we should come back and discuss it a later date when we can find solutions brought from both sides to make this work. Because as both y'all said, we're here for the county and the constituents and to do the best we can. And if we go off half-cocked tonight to make a decision that may be wrong, I think we need to be better understanding of all the options that we have. So I'm for, you know, trying to find a little bit better option.
We're talking about a solution. I mean, I know what the answer to my question is, but I'm gonna ask it. What's the problem that we're identifying? I mean, it goes back to the original question I asked, is, do we wanna continue doing business as usual? Or do we have a need that we need to address? And we need a direction, and that's, if there's not a need, then there's no reason to go any further. If there's a need that the board sees, then we need to address it. And I guess that's the big question for me, but Mr. Summers?
The, this has nothing to do with IT Department or the individuals we're speaking about. We work very well with all the IT Department, Mr. Baker's office, and they try to accommodate the best they can with the personnel they have. We've just brought on 10 tablets for billing purposes, and I'm in limbo right now, and it's causing us report writing speed and accuracy because we're kind of in limbo. We had three people dealing with IT Department. Now we're gonna be down to two. The threats are always gonna be there. IT is always gonna be evolving. Now we're having to back up Facebook pages, and we're having to do this and do that. It's continuing to get more and more and more, and that's the nature of the business that we're gonna be in. So you're gonna be pushed to do something in the near future to make advancements to the IT service of Swanee County. My concern is that, you know, right now, if we're only gonna be dealing with IT and we're gonna be dealing with two individuals, I'm adding 10 tablets onto the system, the Sheriff's Office, I think I heard a number of 60 gonna be added to a system. That's a lot more that's gonna need hands-on tablet, hands-on touching issues in the field, things like that. So we're gonna need some personnel to keep this system going. You know, you're in a better situation than a lot of other counties because the individual we're discussing has been an employee of the county for 10 years in charge of the system. So you know that his threat level is gonna be very, very low. I mean, he's not, he was running the service. So, you know, versus somebody coming from the outside that you know nothing about. But it's just having the IT person available to do what needs to be done in a timely manner. I know that's, you know, our system, if it's down, we're losing money because I can't bill that report, or we're looking for reports that are getting lost. Or if I have a tablet go missing, I have to be able to shut it down immediately because if somebody gets ahold of it and gets ahold of those security numbers, we just put the county at risk. So having the personnel and the knowledge on hand to make that determination quickly and accurately is in benefit of all of us. So, you know, having experienced personnel, being able to identify and solve that problem quickly is definitely one of my concerns as far as fire rescue goes. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, just sort of saying, it sounds like to me that taking 55 computers off, putting 60 computers on is not gonna change the need of IT for the personnel. So we're not gonna save any. We can't even talk about saving a position there. And what Mr. Harris has done by consolidating positions, I think, is wise and he's done a good job as far as trying to save the county some money and doing what we can do. And so both of you guys are right, but I think both of you guys, I can't say for sure if IT has a limited focus here, because I don't know, but it seems like there's a block here that's keeping us from a solution. And that's why I want time for you guys to work out that type of solution so that we can come back and say, hey, let's make a wise decision. And I agree with this, we should be something to this table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to come back with some costs associated with some solutions. And ultimately, I think that's really where we need to be. I listened to that adage when I got here for years, well, we've always done it this way. We've always done it every time I ask a question. We've got five dump trucks, three of them don't run every day. Why is that? Well, that's just the way it's always been. We've got five tractors, three of them run most of the time. Why is that? Well, that's just the way that we've always done things. And I could go down a list. You won't believe this, some of you might. When we used to advertise for bids, we did it in the local newspaper, period. We never had responses to bid requests. I said, let me put this on the internet, under DemandStar, like every other local government does. I had resistance. I had resistance from commissioners. Look at the benefits, commissioners. Long-term, I want dedicated staff that can address County Commission Department needs exactly the way that Mr. Baker wants dedicated staff to handle clerk needs. No different, no different at all. I do have a question for the county attorney. Ultimately, Mr. Bravat, who's responsible for the County Commission Department's IT data? That's a general question.
This board is ultimately responsible, period. And if you, and as you're moving forward, that's why I was asking about even with the sheriff, having a consulting agreement with Mr. Baker's office to be able to handle IT. You know, we are responsible ultimately for it, even though he's doing it, okay? Y'all are responsible for all of that. So we need to have, if we don't do something different, you know, we need to make other arrangements as well, period.
So, to the attorney, so you're saying even if the sheriff is doing it, ultimately it is the board's responsibility? That's what you're saying?
Not necessarily with the sheriff because he's a constitutional officer, but for what they're doing, our document management and system management, whatever they're doing, and I don't know what they're doing, and that's not a knock, I just don't know. I don't, you know, know. But whatever they're doing, y'all are ultimately responsible for it, period.
But that's, is that with the exception of the public records that he is statutorily responsible for?
No, he's just the keeper of the records. We're responsible for the records. There's a difference in what you're talking about as a duty for him to be able to do. But it's...
And I think that's where we went down this, the previous board went down this whole rabbit hole before in the first place was because he was ultimately the first person who had the need under statute to be dealing with computer systems and records, computer records, that it just fit that IT would be a good place to put within that department. And from what I've gathered, there's never been an official memorandum of understanding or anything like that between the board and the Clerk's Office saying, look, we're gonna let you handle it. So I can separate the software security and the data security from the hardware and the hardware management. I can separate it, maybe by assumption, but I can separate it. But it goes back to this, if we're not limiting our liability by a memorandum of understanding and we can't limit his liability for the document keeping, safekeeping of the documents, then I don't know where to go from beyond that point. I really don't know where to go. I mean, if we're gonna take over the, if we're gonna take over the responsibilities of hardware management and systems management, it's like that, and let him deal with his department as far as what he's responsible for, I think it's a longer-term solution. But I think it's not gonna be something that we can do overnight. And...
If I could say something, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's where that, I'll say that this board is one of the best boards I've had to work with. And that's where that we will continue to work with this board. That's where that, but I was wondering if you would like for us to ask Mr. Baker, and I would like to just say one thing. His last name was Baker, just like mine. There's no Ken, all right? I just wanna make sure everybody knows that, all right?
I don't see any resemblance here.
Yeah, he's a lot better looking than that. But it's where that, I was wondering if you'd like for him or another outside person to take and get the numbers for you, so that you have an objective look at how much it would cost for you to split out the services. It's where that, like I say, it's where that we'll continue to, it's gonna take somebody a lot more knowledgeable than me in order to try and get you some numbers, and numbers that you can, I know David can, Vicki can, but it's where that perhaps you would like for somebody on the outside to take and provide just some numbers. If you have someone else that you want to get those numbers for you, then I'm fine with that too. It needs to be numbers that I think that each of you can rely on. That, and exact, I'll repeat, you know, what Jimmy said, it's where that this is your choice. I mean, whatever you decide as a board, that's the way we'll handle it.
Thanks, sir. All right. It's obvious we're not gonna make a decision tonight, so we're just gonna give Mr. Harris for who direction for something to bring back to us.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be real specific. I'd like to try to obtain the data cost and have Mr. Baker, both of them, participate in an evaluation, come up with some other objective criteria, and then compare them and see where we are.
I agree. I think both sides need to come up with their own solution to compare.
All right. Is that pretty much consensus of the board?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Anybody else got anything they wanna add?
I got a bunch of questions, but I think it'd be stupid, so I'm not gonna ask them when it comes to this IT stuff.
Back where we were.
No action on 27, just 27, just direction. Did we have any additional agenda items or anything? I didn't see any.
No, sir, but if I could, just, I wanna make mention of something.
Okay.
For the record, and for the Clerk's benefit, this is just by way of reminder. The board previously took action, approved the execution of the agreement between the county and CSX contingent upon county attorney's satisfaction with the agreement and the concurrence with a number of grant administrators associated with our grants. We have, we have the agreement from CDBG on moving forward. I spoke to Rural Infrastructure today, Mr. Bravat was in my office. They don't need to send us a letter of concurrence. They're satisfied, DOT does, but their concurrence will come after they receive a copy of the executed CSX agreement. So you took previous action, you approved it. You also, it was a three-part motion, or three separate motions, and one of those was to go ahead and authorize the issuance of the check that goes with that. It'll be an amount of $775,246 to CSX with the execution of the agreement. We have to send that to them. I only wanted to bring that up on the record now so that finance will be aware of that if Mr. Baker could, or Ken, I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there. So we can get that check issued to go with the agreement sent to CSX. So it isn't an additional item, it's just a reminder that...
Just a reminder, gotcha. All right. At this time, we'll open up the public concerns and comments. Anybody wishing to speak, might have waited a podium? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
John Koch, 1805 289th Road. We have a situation down in Branford at the school. It has been drawing my attention and brought me into. It is a situation of traffic on a state highway with county responsible, responsibility as well as school board responsibility. Having a wife that has taught there for many years and having sat there and watched it for two and a half weeks, the solution to it is going to be partially a DOT problem and a solution. And the other is gonna be a human problem and a human solution of which the school board will have to deal with, which is put personnel there and to direct traffic. But to handle the DOT issues, I'm asking the County Commission to please ask the Department of Transportation to conduct a study, a safety study of that area, and that can only be done by the request of the County Commission, so that information can be given to the school board so that we can initiate the solution. Regardless of what the school board does in the traffic, whether they go in or out on the highway, or in the front, or out the front, it's still gonna take two personnel to deal with that traffic on a daily basis. And it's also gonna take the sheriff, which he's already aware of, I've discussed this with him, strict enforcement for a while to get it through the people's heads that you don't mess with this intersection down there. It has been a thorn in people's sides for a number of years and has been improved. But the issue now is the amount of traffic has grown. There are some times where the sheriff needs his deputies and they have to be called away, and it leaves a hole. So I'm asking the County Commission to ask the Department of Transportation to conduct a safety inspection of that area. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
What intersection?
That would be the Branford Elementary School and County Road 247.
47, right across from the...
Right across the street from the Sisters Restaurant, which adds to the realm of...
Specifically, specifically, what's, is it just the fact that there's not a reinforced office around?
Well, all right, let me see if I can outline it for you, Mr. Commissioner. You have the school which faces south, you have the restaurant which faces north. They're directly in there. Two times a day, starting at 7:15, even though they're not supposed to be in there, the parents go into the normal area of the school and drop off their kids. As that traffic begins to grow and grow, you've got east traffic and west traffic going... As that traffic begins to grow and grow, you've got east traffic and west traffic going in that way. And at the same time, you've got buses coming out, which either have to take a left or a right. So, you've got two left, sources of a left, and two sources of a right-hand turn, as well as awaiting traffic trying to go back and forth in that, either coming out of Sisters or coming out of the school. So, you have a situation twice a day for about 45 minutes, twice a day, which a situation could develop where somebody could get hurt or get killed, or a number of near misses that I have observed twice in the two days that I've observed it.
And my understanding is there's not an officer out there?
No, no, there are. And the sheriff is, yes, there are. But sometimes those officers are called away. He can't guarantee an officer to be at that intersection all the time. He doesn't have enough deputies. So, the solution is just to train civilians to do the traffic thing at a minimum wage for so many hours of a day with the assistance of a sheriff's deputy. So, if the sheriff's deputy is called away, you still have personnel to deal with that traffic regardless of what solution the school wants to do. And I've looked at their solutions, and I still don't see any difference of getting some things done that the.